I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all the trustees are present and accounted for. Do you have any correspondence?
Yes, sir, I have two tonight.
All right.
First one is a liquor permit. It's transfer of ownership. It's going from nine eighty-three C Store Incorporated at nine eight-three Ohio Pike Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio four five two four five. And it's going to Ma- Makali, M.A.A.K.A.L.I. Petro LLC, doing business as Bennett Marathon at nine eighty-three Ohio Pike Union Township four five two four five. Mr. McCormick has sent over the accompanying zoning, and the police department has no objections.
Okay, very good.
Second, I have a, a letter from the village of Batavia. Just dear trustees, on behalf of the mayor and the Batavia Village Council, I thank you for extending mutual aid to complete an investigation. Some months ago, the mayor confronted me with an allegation of misconduct in office involving the police chief. The mayor assumed traditional investigor- investigatory agencies would best suit this task since the village of Batavia needed more fiscal resources to complete such an investigation. I immediately advised the mayor only to recommend the Union Township Police Department, specifically the investigative division, to undertake this assignment. In these circumstances, I told the mayor that the village must determine the facts for the integrity of the village and the police chief. I further advised the mayor that if the UTINV accepted responsibility, the officers involved will not be influenced by me, the mayor, the target, or anyone else during this investigation. Consequently, the mayor directed me to manage the investigation, report the findings to him. I asked Mr. Corey Wright if the township would extend the investigative unit's resources for this assignment. A day later, Mr. Wright responded indicating that he had completed his due diligence regarding this request and that Chief Reese had agreed to extend this service to the village. Within hours of approval, Lieutenant Blanketship contacted me as a conduit for the village to arrange a debriefing of available information and explain the role of the UTINV. As I expected, Lieutenant Blanketship told me he would focus on the allegations presented and complete an impartial investigation without any predetermined conclusions. From that point forward, Lieutenant Blanketship and Lieutenant Hines worked tirelessly to finish a thorough investigation involving forensic activities, research, interviews with the Batavia police officers, employees, complainants, citizens, and other potential witnesses, and other investigative actions. Throughout the process, Lieutenant Blanketship and Lieutenant Hines kept me apprised of the status so I could report back to the mayor. Upon completion, I had the opportunity to review the documents and exhibits. As expected, the report was focused, concise, and void of any appropriate influence. The document was used as a basis for formal charges and establishing a public hearing. Before the public hearing, the police chief resigned. For the past thirty years, I've always said that Union Township has the best police department in the region. Your police department's professionalism, integrity, and competence are beyond reproach. The work on this assignment is just another example. On behalf of the mayor and the village of Batavia, I want to thank you personally for allowing the agency to assist the village. I also appreciate the opportunity to praise the work of Lieutenant Blanketship and Lieutenant Hines on a job well done. Again, thank you. Ken Geis, Village of Batavia.
Wow, very nice. Chief Reese, that's quite a compliment to your, your people.
Well, that's a compliment to the lieutenant. I appreciate that. It's a compliment to Lieutenant Hines and Blanketship, who are just the ultimate professionals and are very proud of the work that they do.
Yeah, they always have been. So, yeah, that's awesome. I'd like to hear that. It's a very nice, very nice letter. I appreciate it. All right, moving on. Before I go any further, comment cards are in the back of the room. If anybody wants to fill one out, you know, bring it up. We'll have a comment period in a few minutes. Before that, I want to bring up a potential hire. Is Chris Davidson in the room? Chris, come on up to the podium. Chief Reese, tell us about Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I would like to present tonight to the board Chris, Mr. Chris Davidson, for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Davidson is a resident of Clermont County and is a two thousand and five graduate of New Richmond High School. Mr. Davidson is a two thousand and ten graduate of the Scarlet Oaks Police Academy where he received his OPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Davidson comes to us from the Goshen Township Police Department where he has served as a full-time police officer for seven years. Mr. Davidson has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and a psychological examination. I'm requesting that the board appoint Chris Davidson to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Davidson's start date is scheduled for December third, twenty twenty-four.
Very good. Imagine Chief Rose out there is not happy about you leaving.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, he's a good man. I've always liked him.
Chief has a good seat.
So, you got any questions for us? Anything for the board?
I don't. Just thank you for the opportunity. Everybody had their hands in this opportunity that I've been given and looking forward to serving the community.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you going through the rigorous process that we have here and surviving it and getting to this level. And so far, we've never voted anybody down, so you'll probably be okay.
Let's not be the first.
Probably not. Mr. Logue, anything?
Now, we're excited to have you here. Did I hear correctly, seven years with Goshen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And before that, was your training or were you before that?
Uh, just smaller departments.
Smaller departments, okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
With the county.
Awesome. All right. Is Willard a family name?
It is.
Okay. I feel that's special and unique. That's great to have that type of tie. That's great. Well, I know our fellow trustee here, Mr. Dills, is gonna get into some questions about your family in a second here, because we see the beautiful family with you, so now we're excited to have you.
Yeah, Mr. Dills. Chris, thanks for being here very much. And, uh, yeah, and go ahead and introduce your family. You got them all here.
Yeah, this is my wife, Stacy, my son Mason, and my daughter Nora.
Love it, love it.
I bet she's daddy's girl, isn't she?
She is.
I bet.
See her get up in the walker. Because I saw her get up and walk right up to you. Yeah.
Well, you can see we have a lot of our UT police officers here to shake your hand and congratulate you as well for being here. So, I appreciate you choosing Union Township. And you'll notice that a good majority, a lot of our officers, come here and they stay here. And so, I want to make you home and make this family for you. So, welcome aboard, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, Chris.
Sounds good. So, with that, I would like a motion to hire Willard Chris Davidson for the position of police officer at the twenty-four month rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement with an effective date of December the third, two thousand and twenty-four, pending successful completion of a medical physical examination.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, real call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Do you have any other photo with him?
Yes, yes, yeah, I'm going to make another act. So, don't go anywhere. We're gonna get, get a photo with you. All right, next on the agenda is a public comment. I have only one card. If anybody else thinks of anything, go out, yep, bring it up. While you're up there, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Okay.
Gary Beach. Five minutes, please.
I would just like to talk to the trustees a little bit. I have, I've got a background in construction and stuff, and I can't understand why we get roads fixed and stuff and then people come in and have to tear them up, but then they don't bring them back up to what the specs were after we've had roads paved and stuff. Doesn't seem like we can't get any ditch lines cleaned out and brush cut back on some of these roadways. I just don't, you know, understand why Township doesn't do more of that.
Which roadways?
Well, one of the, I live off Eva Road, Eva Lane. I know we haven't had much rain, but anytime we have rain, those ditch lines are always overflowing, running out on the roadway and causing gravel to be washed out on the roadway. Those ditch lines need cleaned out, brush needs cut back on the sides of the road. Sometimes you have to stop to meet a bus or something. You gotta pull over to let them through. And then there's also on some vehicles on Schoolhouse that I've written up a complaint about. They've sat there for a couple of years, no engines and stuff in them, and they're just sitting there. Look junky. Make property value worse.
Okay. So, the ditch lines that are overflowing, is that along Schoolhouse or where's that?
Eva.
On Eva, okay. All right. And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you what your address was just for the record.
I live on forty-six oh six Pearl Lane.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I'll be back. Okay.
And then another, like I said, another thing, I don't know, you know, if an outside contractor does work and stuff on the roads, who's, who does inspection or whatever to make sure that they're properly put back to specs? I mean, I never see anybody do any inspection. I, I was in construction and I was in inspection, so I know, you know, there's stuff that needs to be done when they're putting in gas lines, water lines, repair work, and stuff like that, but it just never seems to happen. And then that road starts to deteriorate where they're at, and then it just starts more problems.
Okay, yeah, anything along Schoolhouse is a, is a town, that is a township road. You know, water drainage or, you know, kind of swimming water, that's a county issue. We certainly communicate with them and work with them on these issues. Mr. Taylor will send somebody down there to take a look at that. Do you have an address where these junk cars are? Because we, that is something we do in force.
Down Schoolhouse.
Kind of roughly? Between what and what?
It's before you, it's right there around where you turn left to go on Flick. How much, they're on the right hand side, right on Schoolhouse.
We can get our inspector down there, take a look at that too, and, you know, give warnings, issue citations, and, you know, whatever is required. So, take a look at that.
And then, like I say, on some of the roadways down on Eva, no, it's part of the problem, part of the issue where they ran that gas line and stuff down Eva and it's over at Halbert, and it's, they fixed, they repaired it, come back in and repaired it again, and now it's slipping and falling away again over that, over top of that Halbert. So, the roadway's dipping. Just, it just hasn't.
Okay, yeah, we might have to get Duke out there to take care of that, but yeah, we'll take a look. Thank you for bringing this session. Mr. Hex. Name and address for the record, please.
Do you have a memorized?
I do.
Say it. Go.
Four 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 Wood.
Four 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 Wood, record Cincinnati, Ohio four five two five five. Thank you, Mr. Dills.
Five minutes, please.
I'm, I'm here to kind of gripe as usual about, about three things. Mr. Logue?
Just listen.
Good. I appreciate you guys all paying attention when I'm talking.
We are.
So, the first thing is the Fernando Cruz case, one twenty-four Z from August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, where two of you recused or abstained from that vote claiming that you had wanted to avoid appearance of impropriety. Then you would not, Mr. Logue?
He's taking notes. He's listening, Chris. It's okay.
I'd just like to, so, make sure he's paying attention. I don't know what he's doing up there. But you, two of you abstained or recused from the vote. Neither of you were as clear as to why. Mr. Dills, I think the reason for you became clear because you were in a business relationship, but I don't believe you ever talked about that. Mr. Logue never talked about what it was. Now, I've heard rumors for a while that the project had been pulled and wasn't happening. On election day, I've sent notes asking about it, never got a response from the transparency team. I saw Mr. Wright on election day and asked him to his car window while I was getting beers, to have beers while giving out election literature, since you guys made this a drinking area up here. Very intelligent decision.
Glad you're joining.
And Mr. Wright told me that, in fact, it was pulled. So, I'd appreciate if you guys would address what your conflicts were, what the current status of the project was, and, and why, if it did get pulled, why that wasn't shared proactively with us or in response to emails I sent. Second thing is Dora and RJ's. It just gets more crazy every minute. Now, I'm under the understanding that you've declared the woods a patio with RJ's. It's the most moronic thing I've ever seen, but it doesn't matter. The beer was being sold outside the lines of the patio that I got as a record request. It appears that the Board of Liquor Control was misled as to what was happening when RJ's was actually submitting for an expansion to the Paradise Pavilion that was previously under Jungle Jim's control, that somehow a map got substituted in that implied that there was this whole area. But now, if you define that as an area, I don't want to be too confusing, but now with your Dora, if anybody walks with a beer outside of those lines and back in, they're breaking your Dora rules. It's like it's time for you guys to reset on this. We look like dumbasses with all the businesses having no Dora stickers where they didn't even want doors, a Dora down there. You could have easily done a ninety-day festival permit when you had your concert series, and then you could have bid for the alcohol beverage services like a church festival does and made this so much easier and cleaner and simpler. Done it the right way, but I'm not sure that you guys can step back and admit you made a lot of huge mistakes here. And a lot of times, it's a lot harder doing things the crooked back room way than it is just doing them right. And what do I mean by crooked back room way? From my read of the resolutions that were passed, you guys are paying RJ's twenty-nine hundred dollars a year for six events to sell beer. So, they get paid four hundred and eighty-three dollars an event to sell beer. I think there's other people that would pay you to sell beer, but we know there's personal relationships with some of the trustees and the people down at RJ's, so we've done some sort of cockamamie scheme so that RJ's can be the sole provider of beverages at the concert pavilion, and we just ignore pretty much a lot of the laws, even the Dora rules. And we end up with a dumbass store that the merchants down there think is, is makes them want to leave, not stay, because none of it, you know, the mattress shop, the T-Mobile, the Spectrum, they don't want to drink, they don't want beer drinking in their stores. The last thing I want to hit is Mr. Logue, your car theft? Mr. Logue?
He's listening.
Does he have a problem with eye contact?
He's taking notes.
Apparently he does, okay. So, your car theft, when your car theft took place, you probably know I got the body, the body cam video of it. Nothing's big sensational out of it. But why did you then come in here this night and misrepresent what happened? That morning, you knew your wife had left the keys in the car and some kids took the car or whatever, but you came in here and made it sound, in a racial-type way, that inner-city kids somehow had an ability to use tablets and cords to steal cars, never revealing that night in the trustee meeting that the reality is that you left the ki-, your wife left the keys in the car. I got news for you. This is why I have such a bizarre feeling about you, because everybody makes mistakes, right? I've left the garage door open. I'm sure my wife's left the keys in the car. But when it happens, most people can just say, I screwed up and I learned from it. You know, people in my neighborhood appreciative of the police stopping and reminding them they left the garage door open, right? That's not bad people, but it's a lesson to learn. So, instead of telling the lesson, Mr. Logue, of, you know, we all gotta be vigilant. My wife accidentally left the keys in the car, which anybody can understand, right? Anybody can understand that, that instead you have to come in here and make it sound like some inner-city evil youth were, caused this.
Mr. Hex, it's, it's been five minutes. Could you wrap this up?
So, if I've addressed three things, I have to leave. So, I know a lot of times you guys don't talk about stuff or respond to stuff till the end, but I'd appreciate on those three topics, the status of the case one twenty-four Z, the stat, the Dora, and can we just hit the reset button and do it right? Do you fit ninety-day festival permits and get rid of all these dumb stickers? And, Mr. Logue, maybe you can comment on your car theft, because I think it all comes back to you guys ran on a platform of being open and transparent, and it just seems like now more than ever that it's a sketchy shit and dumb shit happening all the time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hex.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Mr. Wright, do you have any, I guess, updates on why Cruz pulled out or what's going off the, the door at RJ's?
Well, I can tell you that on the one twenty-four Z that Mr. Cruz pulled out, and that, that is all we know, and that, you know, at the end of the day, the project will reset and then it'll be advanced back through the zoning process. So...
Okay, that's fine.
That's really all I am on that. As far as the Dora, you know, the...
And Mr. Wright, that's the same update that you already gave the gentleman that just spoke, correct? It's the same update?
Yeah, well, it'd be, the question that was asked was actually what happened.
Okay.
And it's like it's been pulled, and that was literally, I think, all the words that were exchanged.
So, transparency sake.
And then some pleasantries about election day and whatnot. I mean, it was a pretty casual conversation.
We are providing adequate response to the, the special interest on that, correct?
He, he asked me and I responded in person. So, as far as the Dora goes, you know, we believe the Dora's in compliance with the law. We believe, you know, all the legislation that gets put through here goes through our law director, whether it's for the CIC or whether it's for the township. You know, we've already talked to RJ's and Liquor Control about the boundaries, so that's really not, you know, that, it, it's not as big a deal as I think. It's, it's important, but it's not, you know, typically what they'll do is they'll tell, like, the explanation that I've heard is if they get somebody doing that, they'll tell them to move the cart or whatever, and that's typically what happens. But, you know, at the end of the day, we can and will do better. You know, it is our property. There is a license agreement on that that puts all the onus on the permit holder to observe by those things, and it makes no difference who the permit holder is. But, you know, at the end of the day, we'll just make sure those rules are clarified.
It's okay. Thank you for those updates. All right, let's, either you two have anything else on this? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Dills.
Yeah, just the, I mean, Mr. X, I abstained because I said I had a personal relationship with him, but yeah, he's, we partnered on a business together, so that's why I abstained, and I think it was a good abstention. But yeah, I mean, Fernando pulled out because he just became a headache, so it would have been a great development, and he was going to just be a tenant. He wasn't gonna be a builder. He doesn't own the land. He's gonna be a tenant. It just became a headache, so he pulled out. How cool would it have been to have a nice, you know, brewery mixed with a pizza place, right in the middle of a kind of a mini concert area? It would have been a great area to have, so he pulled out because it became a headache. So, that's why. As far as, you know, you know, we, we're, we're, us three, we're not experts at anything necessarily, but we hire good people around us to make good qualified expert opinions, and I do trust Mr. Wright wholeheartedly. And, you know, when he chose the Dora area, obviously it's bigger than what is needed right now, but you don't plan just for today. You plan for tomorrow. You plan for a year from now, five years from now, and hopefully ten years from now. So, there's always tweaks, and you can always learn from decisions you make, and hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but we won't find that out, I don't think, for a little while. So, your opinion is you think the Dora area is goofy? My opinion is I think it's good for future growth and development potentially, and if it's not, it's not. But we live and learn and make decisions and roll with it. So, I think Union Township's very active and is doing good things. And so, I know, I mean, Milford and, City Milford and Loveland also have Doras, and some of those businesses may or may not want someone walking around in theirs. They can grab a sticker, throw it on their door, and not have a beer cup in there. It's not like, and, and when, not now, but, I mean, Chief Reese, I'll defer to you. And we had, we had the fireworks, and you said not one incident, not one bad thing, and then I would also defer to Mr. Taylor. Again, I'm deferring to my experts. Mr. Taylor, I mean, have we had a bad cleanup issue? Has there been cups all over the place where it's holy smokes? It's, you know, the sky is falling. We haven't. He's saying we haven't. He's saying we haven't. It's okay. But when you paint a picture of like, look at all these drunks walking around, walking into T-Mobile, it's kind of silly. I don't think that's really happening, and according to my police chief, who's the expert, is telling me, oh, we've never had an issue so far. It's okay. So, we make decisions, we roll with it, and plan for, not just for today, but for the future as well, so.
That was all very well said. Thank you, Mr. Dills.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, so unless there's anything else, we'll move on. Chief Clements, give us a department report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of October, the fire department responded to one hundred and seventy-six fire and service calls, five hundred and twenty EMS details. We made patient contact with four hundred and ninety-two patients, transporting three hundred and ninety-five of those, completed one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two hours of training. Were involved in forty public education details, completed fifty-six life safety inspections, and fourteen inspection, inspections with Clermont County's building department. And that concludes my report.
Great. Any comments, questions?
Good, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Logue, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Dills.
The, so, myself and Mr. Wright, we spoke at the lead Clermont class. Was that last week? It was last week.
It was last Thursday.
Yeah, last Thursday. And, and Chief's in that class, and Corey and I were just giving, or Mr. Wright and I were just giving an update on how the township works and what's the point of a trustee, what's the point of administrator, but, and then Chief Clements got pounded with a few questions from the audience members that was, you know, came out of left field and thought you just did a really good job of handling yourself, and those questions are a good job, so. But Chief Reese, you also graduated that class as well, right?
Yes, sir.
So, good class, and just wanted to say good job, because Corey and I were there to speak, and the next thing you know, Chief Clements is pounded, you know, with quite a bit of questions and detailed questions. You did a good job of handling yourself and, you know, answering. So, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, sir.
Okay. Chief Reese, tell us what's going on with Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of October, the Communications Center handled five thousand one hundred and seventeen calls for service for police fire and EMS. And our, our clerks, clerk courts, records area handled four hundred and seventy-five juvenile and adult court-related documents to be processed for court. Our records section processed eighty-two court notices requiring officers' personal appearance in court. They processed ten Rule Sixteens for the prosecutor's office, handled one hundred and sixty records requests, and redacted seventy-nine body camera videos. In the area of public affairs, our officers conducted four public relations events during the month of October. These events consisted of a career day at Bethel Intermediate School, a night out event in New Richmond, a trunk or treat event at East Fork State Park, and our officers handed out candy as they traditionally do in the different neighborhoods on Halloween. We also graduated our eighteenth Citizen Police Academy at the end of October. We also graduated our 18th Citizen Police Academy at the end of October, so we added another 23 graduates to our, to our alumni, which we're very proud of, the CPA continues to be a popular program at the Police Department. In the area of operations, our officers took 194 incident reports, 72 crash reports, they conducted 402 traffic stops, wrote 119 citations, wrote 302 written warnings, made 83 criminal arrests, 53 traffic arrests, and served 42 warrants. In the area of training, or I'm sorry, with our honor guard, in the month of October, they participated in two events. The first was the American Warrior Initiative Veteran Service at the Claremont County Warbird Museum, and they also attended and presented colors at the Citizen Police Academy graduation. In the area of training, our officers attended 64 hours of training in the month of October. And that concludes my report, sir.
All right, very good. Mr. Logue, any questions, Thomas?
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Dills, anything?
Chief, are you, are you guys planning on competing again in DC? Or no? Are you waiting, you going to wait?
The plan is not to compete this November, we typically do it every other year.
So, so next November?
Yes, sir. Next May.
Twenty-four?
You asked me about Washington DC.
Twenty-five or twenty-six in May.
It would be May of '26, would be the next time they compete.
Twenty-six, got it, okay, fantastic, yeah.
Chief, as part of your report, you mentioned four public relations events during October. The career day at Bethel Intermediate, the night-out New Richmond, trunk-or-treat at East Fork State Park, handing out candy at, I guess, for, yeah, by the on-duty officers during Halloween. Any drill on, on any of that? What kind of feedback are you getting from the community? What, I don't know, anything interesting, exciting happen?
Yeah, these are typically, Mr. Becker, these are typically events that we're invited to, we typically will check with, with other jurisdictions, we don't want to step on any feet. The career days are something that we do occasionally, specifically at West Claremont High School, more than other places, but on some events, we do reach out when other, when other areas ask us to. The trunk-or-treat was, I believe, a new event this year that the State Patrol came up with at East Fork. They asked us if we would participate, which we were happy to. And New Richmond, the Village in New Richmond, this is the second year in a row they've done their night-out event. We typically hold ours in August, they typically hold theirs in October, and they reached out and asked if we could have an officer in a car down there, which, anytime we get a chance to do outreach with the community, we like to take advantage of that, so. The candy that we hand out at Halloween is always provided to us by our Citizen Police Academy alumni, and Mr. Duett's here tonight, he's a member of that alumni, and they're very gracious to provide us with that every year, so.
All right, it's awesome. Yeah, I think this is great that the Police Department is doing all this public outreach, and, you know, I think the community appreciates, could be seen out in the community. The, yeah, and graduating another Citizen Police Academy, I think that's awesome. It looked like I was kind of losing interest for a while, so good to see that going again. Hey, the last thing I wanted to ask you about, so there was a situation October 2nd, it was a missing person, 16-year-old girl, aerial resources were deployed, she was eventually found, returned to her parents. What was, is she okay? I mean, what was the story there?
She's okay, this is a female that lives in the township, she doesn't have autism, I want to stress that, she is developmentally challenged, developmentally disabled and challenged. She's gotten away from home quite a few times in the last year, we're trying to work with the parents. They did provide a watch to her so we could, we could track her in the cases she got out. Unfortunately, on this particular occasion, she found a way to take it off. We were able to find her down in Rolling Oaks in the Woodline, an officer just patrolling in the area recovered her, returned her safely to her parents. So, again, we're trying to work with, with the parents, and we do have several situations like this in the township, several families where, where unfortunately the kids get away from them, so it's always a work in progress. I'm just happy we could get her back safe and sound, so.
Yeah, it's got to be horrifying for the, for the parents, and, good, well, I'm glad this had a happy ending, and, you know, hopefully it won't, won't continue. All right, Service Department, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, from October 1st through the 31st, 14 barrels were performed, generating $8,200. 14 resident graves were purchased, generating $9,800. Two non-resident graves were purchased for $3,400. Six columbarium niches were purchased for $8,800. The total amount generated for the period was $34,062. In the Parks Division, 50 mums were planted in the landscape areas of the Civic Center. New message boards were installed at Veterans Park. In the Roads Division, a total of 92 potholes were repaired on over a total of 15 township roads, and the Road Department continued the trimming of tree limbs and brush from the right-of-way and intersections on four township roads. Also, the Fall Junk Days were held, October 24th through the 26th, and if anyone was there, it was extremely busy. And that concludes my report.
So, tell us more about Junk Days, anything unique, exciting, usually something that occurs. I didn't hear any complaints, so I guess nobody got turned away, and everybody got their junk delivered as they planned?
Yes, so I can give you a little bit of background, so 23 30-yard dumpsters were collected or switched out or filled, seven metal dumpsters, eight packer trucks, and 60 refrigerators and 25 AC units. So, over the course of three days, we averaged about 10 30-yard dumpsters a day.
So, how does that compare, the Fall Junk Days, just in the years that have gone by, about the same, more or less?
I'd say this is probably one of the busiest ones I've ever seen.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, it, well, Lieutenant Combs isn't here, but he brought his, and it was almost a drive lane, that's all we had left to get through. That was it. Police Department, Chief, I appreciate the help, and directing traffic, so it was just, we had to weave them through the parking lots, and it was, so we didn't have a backup, basically, on Eichel's Road.
And the roads were open, and everything went well with that?
Yeah, it was, it was just really busy.
Okay, well, this sounds like a great event for the public, and money well spent, and appreciate your people doing all that. Hey, tell us about the message boards during the parks, I think that was Mr. Logue's idea to get those set up. So, what kind of, where are they, where can the public find them, and what will the public find when they find them?
So, the message boards are on the large restrooms at Veterans and Clepper Park. The township will post messages, community events, basically it is for the township to facilitate some information to the public. But they're on each, they're on the side of the building, is the one at Clepper is facing the playground set, the one at the Veterans Park is facing the large shelter. So, that way, you know, we can get whatever message we want to put out there.
Okay. So, so this is, again, in addition to the electronic signs that we have, and this is something sealed, it's not something the public can put in there, so this is for the township, getting, you know, just communicating with the public?
Yes, sir, they're lockable cabinets.
Okay, very good. Hi, Mr. Logue, any questions, Thomas?
Keep up the great work, Mr. Taylor. I heard a, one comment over the weekend from a resident that was asking about Veterans Park, some interest in playgrounds, but then also, when, I don't know what the potential is on this, or your resources and costs, but they, they referenced that walking trail gets very, very busy, and they said if ever in the future, when new pavement is happening, if we're able to widen it just a little bit, would be very helpful for mothers and strollers that are going past each other and past other people in the community, so. Said a great perspective to have and be able to share with you, so I'm sure that I would share with you.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Dills.
As crazy as, I have never used Junk Days.
I have.
Ever, ever, in my life, I've never used the Junk Day for anywhere I've lived.
You're the guy that's just throwing the tires out the window down the street?
Yeah. I'm joking. I just, that's incredible. Mr. Taylor, I want to ask you, so we had Mr. Beach up here a minute ago, and I saw you taking notes, I appreciate that, and so, I want to say, a friend of mine lives on a county road, but he was, he was asking, he texted me, he was asking me about, he saw some folks surveying and whatnot, he was like, "What's going on?" I'm like, "That doesn't ring a bell, I don't remember us doing anything on that road." So I immediately reached out to Matt, I'm Service Taylor, and he's like, "It's a county road, but give me a minute." Within 30 minutes, he'd already contacted the county, got to the bottom of it, responded back to me, I let, I let, you know, the folk, the neighbor know, and what was going on and all that. So, just want to say that even if it is a county road, and technically it's not our responsibility at all, Mr. Taylor does do a great job at getting to the bottom of it, getting an answer, even putting a word in with the county to hopefully give them a push to get something done, so. Promise you that those issues that were addressed earlier, Mr. Taylor just does a stand-up job of just getting to the bottom of it, finding what's going on, and how long it'll take, and all that stuff, so, just wanted to commend you on that, so, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's all good, sir.
Okay, and I concur. Mr. McCormick, planning and zoning, please.
Thank you. For the month of October, in terms of inspections, we had 52 inspections, nine complaints, seven unfounded complaints, five warning citations, two 15-day non-compliance letters, 18 resolved without action cases. We had 416 legal signs removed, six miscellaneous issues, 18 violations for the monthly total, and nine re-inspections of violations with one nuisance case filed. In terms of permit activity, we had six commercial permits, which was our highest of the year so far, three changes of use, three signs, one temporary trailer, one temporary sign, seven single-family dwelling units, three additions, two decks, seven accessory structures, 13 pools, fences, and for 46 permits for the month, total revenue being $10,249, and the Fire Department revenue related to those permits was $1,050. Additionally, I was going to add to my report, after we submitted around December of last year, we finally received word here in the last week or two, that the two structures that we submitted for a demolition grant through Claremont County were in fact awarded, and that structure, one of the two structures, one is next to Gray's Towing on Old 74, was an old bank structure, dilapidated, he wants to take that down, and hopefully we're going to get a nice fence and some landscaping put there in front of it as a buffer, I got to work with him on that. And then the other structures on 125, next to one of the tent shops on the southeastern portion of 125, kind of across the nasty Withlesville, that area, I think. But those will probably come down next year, there were 40-plus sites in Claremont County that were on the list of structure, list to be removed, and they are taking them down according to how dangerous they are, and, you know, how, number of complaints, proximity to residential areas and so forth. The only other thing I was going to mention is, you know, there was some discussion about Veterans Park, so we worked on a grant earlier in the year for some new tables at Veterans Park, and those are being installed actually by the Service Department now, probably be done the next week or so, and so you'll have some nice new tables, and then we're also working on a new grant for the playground equipment to be replaced, and that's, I know something that may come up in the administrators' report, so. And that concludes my report.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Logue, anything?
Good, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Mr. Dills?
Sure, Mr. Becker, well done.
Mr. Wright, the administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Becker, and I'll be brave, my voice is not fantastic tonight, so, so I apologize in advance. So the MOU for the Waterline Project at Clepper has been advanced, Choice One is now fully underway on the engineering work on that. In addition, we held a joint meeting with Choice One and DWA Recreation, which is also Game Time, which is the state, or the Omnia bid name for the Omnia Purchasing Partnership, it's Game Time, care of DWA Recreation, Inc. This is, make sure that we were collaborating with both the engineering firm and the splash pad designer-installer to make sure the projects are coordinated, we'll continue to do that as the design moves along. Construction on Champion's Way Water Road and Storm is now basically complete, right-of-way has been dedicated, sanitary sewer construction has commenced, they are making good progress already, they are, I talked to Mr. Taylor today, they're already basically at River Valley, which, once they get to River Valley, they'll make a cut, turn 90 degrees, and then come across by where the former coal jet facility is and into the property that was subsequently, or just last week, closed on and transferred to Rumke. So Rumke owns the 31 acres on that, on that property there, or owns that, successfully closed on that, netted more than $4.7 million at closing, so that, that will be a new $12 million transfer facility on about 15 acres with the remainder of the acreage reserve for future industrial development and regional stormwater detention and retention. Veterans pickleball courts were, resurfacing work's now complete, it turned out great, go over and look at them, they're fantastic. We do need to work on some landscaping around there, I've talked to Mr. Taylor about getting some landscaping and softening up those wind screens, which are beneficial to the pickleball players, but we want to try and break up the profile as well, which we can do that. Another project, the Township Personnel, Road Crews began installing pavement millings that we obtained from Barksalt Run Road, if anybody was over at Clepper, you wondered what those mountains and mountains of gravel were, those were the reclaimed pavement millings from Barksalt. So we saved a ton of money on using those, instead of, you know, paying to have them trucked off and then paying to have new gravel trucked in. So, kudos to Matt and his guys for working that, and we'll continue to add to that with the goal of eventually putting an asphalt cap on that, but great work saving money on that. Tonight, we have JED public hearing, corresponding piece of legislation for the Children's Hospital Expansion Area JED, this is really for the area north of Children's Hospital, that was not included in the original Ivy Point JED, this is really the VA, and some outlaw parcels along the front, it's there on Eichel, it's about 12 acres. Couple other items, we are working at Terrace Ridge, the developers working at Terrace Ridge to install the roundabout island wedges, which was a point of contention, if you remember the zoning case that came through, so I think last week they had two of them cut out, and they're starting to form and pour those, and so there'll be curb islands and be the appropriate traffic controls in that. We're also still working with the county on the Almont Old 74 project in the summer side, trying to do a joint project with county engineer, park bulletin board installations are now complete. We have a LWCF grant tonight, seeking approximately $410,000-ish in grant funding with, it's a 50-50 grant program, to advance the playground equipment at Veterans Park. You know, we try to identify every grant source that we can, and since we're kind of in a mid-state capital funding cycle, and the project's not really eligible for CDBG, LWCF was really the best option, we could go after a large pot of money to try and do that. We'll have some time, if we're awarded, a number of fiscal years to budget that, so I think, what was it, three fiscal years total, Mark?
Three.
Yeah, so we have some time to absorb that if we get the award. One last thing, we were awarded the EV charging grants for the Ferguson Drive Facility and the Civic Center, but we haven't really heard anything more from ODOT on that, that's going to be a process, I'm not really sure they know the process since it's a new program, it's carbon reduction funds, so we'll, we'll see where that goes, but we did hear from OKI that we were selected. All the projects in the area were funded, so.
Excellent. I wonder how firm all that funding is, and with administration change in January, if there's a possibility that something gets taken back or repealed?
It could be.
It's possible.
It's possible.
Talking with the other people that serve at OKI, and so Ohio-Kentucky Indian Regional Council of Governments, I mean, yeah, sometimes you only have programs that are basically forced, like these for, and I simply said to other people there, "Boy, wouldn't it be great if federal government just released funds for pavement issue and infrastructure that everybody uses every single day, like Mr. Beach brought up?" And there's pretty, pretty resounding support for that, so, it's just, I just recognize that we may get away from special interest items, who knows, so.
Yeah. Either way. It, it could happen or it could not, you know, I don't know, but we'll see.
Still could be a nice thing to be able to have, because I do think that the technology's going to stick around for a while, so.
Yep. That concludes my report. Mr. Dills, anything?
Mr. Wright, can you do me a solid, and at your discretion, whether it's next month or relatively soon, can you invite a representative from Rumke, I think Mr. Triciano or one of the Rumke family members to come in and kind of just give a presentation so the public can see what exactly it'll be, and then also, I kind of would like it to be a little bit of an open discussion for any potential questions, the folks might... of an open discussion for any potential questions the folks might have, you know, that they're, that would come with this.
Sure.
When, when is their public hearing going to take place?
They, they already had it. They had it. We actually allowed them to have it here. They had it last week. It was the same day we did lead. They had nobody show up.
I know. That's why, that's why I think if we do it here, and obviously, Mr. Chairman, if it's next month, it'd be you, if not, then Mr. Logan, if it's following here. But do you have kind of just a discussion, an open discussion?
Sure.
And just pound them with some questions that?
Yeah.
Folks might have, and, you know, if that's, if that's possible.
Yeah, and I think, you know, candidly, our conversations with them from the very get-go is, you know, this is not a landfill. It's not an incinerator. All the activities occur inside the twelve million dollar facility, inside the building. There will be public-facing recycling opportunities on the property, which is fantastic. In the purchase contract. Yeah, yeah, on the purchase contract, here to work with us to establish, you know, junk pickups, which takes a lot of pressure off of, you know, the service department. I know in other communities they've gone to a voucher-driven program.
Yeah.
So people can get vouchers. I mean, we don't know what that's going to look like yet, but they're, they're fantastic people to work with. And, yeah, I'm happy to invite.
Whenever, whenever you think. I mean, I would say, when are they breaking ground?
Imminent.
So, so maybe next month at the latest January meeting, to have someone come in, probably at the beginning of the meeting, while there's a lot of folks here.
Yes, they've already been through zoning. It's an industrial use. It's permitted use.
Oh, so they didn't come through the board?
Doesn't have to. It's an industrial use.
Got it. Okay. And there's no PD to it?
No PD. So zoned in one.
Just have a PowerPoint, show them what it'll look like, all that, how long it'll take, and then any, any potential questions people can throw at them. I like that, if that's possible.
I'll talk to them and see if I can set it up.
Okay. If that's all right with Mr. Chairman, it's next month, so.
Of course.
It's all good, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Good report.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, we, we really appreciate the, the great things you're doing for the township. We all, we all agree on that. And, and many things, especially you. We really appreciate you. So, public hearings is next on the agenda. JED number eight, please introduce that for us, Mr. Wright.
Okay, so this is really a procedural step in the JED process, which is defined in Ohio Revised Code seven fifteen, seven two. So for the establishment of the JED, both contracting parties have to notice and hold a public hearing and maintain an inspection file for not less than thirty days. So we've completed that. I believe we advertised, what, Mr. McCormick, early October, I believe it was, and well in advance of this hearing, had the inspection file out. Milford is following a similar track. This resolution, you know, you have to have a public hearing, take public comment on the, on the JED or the contract, and then open and close a public hearing, and then consider legislation that would allow for the execution of the contract. Now, does that mean the JED's done? No. Then there'll be some steps to set up the JED. We'll have to get an EIN number for the JED. We have to form the board, appoint the board, which you'll see some subsequent appointments, you know, probably at the next meeting if this goes through. We would then bring some recommendations for some appointments, and then start the process of actually forming the JED. Then, once the JED board convenes, they adopt a series of resolutions to actually implement the tax, you know, to collect and enforce the income tax. And as, you know, as the case with most of our municipalities around here, one percent on earnings and corporate net earnings for the employees and the businesses in the JED. And I would note, both property owners, property owners have the ability to either petition to be included, and if they don't, then you have to send them notice. In this case, everybody who's going to be in this has submitted petitions to be included. So there would be Children's VA, the entity that runs VA, and there's a couple of township properties.
All right, sounds good. Are there any questions for Mr. Wright before I ask for a motion to open the hearing? All right. In that case, Mr. Logan, may I have a motion to open a hearing on JED number eight?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
The JED eight hearing is open at six fifty-one PM.
Okay. Is anybody here that would like to speak on this topic, JED number eight? Any proponents? Any opponents? Any interested party? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Close JED, the public hearing on JED number eight at six fifty-two PM.
All right. We ready to move on? Okay. So the consent agenda is next, and.
You can vote on it later as part of the.
It's, it's, it's coming. It's on the agenda.
Yep.
Mr. Logan, I would like a, a motion to, this is the consent agenda. So this would be to, to approve the zoning minutes and the regular meeting minutes from October eighth, as well as the approval of payments prepared by Mr. Campbell and the approval of the monthly financial report.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the, the list of purchase orders exceeding fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have two lists tonight. One is, and it's customary, when we have projects that are going out, we'll send, you know, the purchase orders out for, for signature and, and all that. So one is a shortlist. It's one item that was related to the ARPA storage building. So that's been segregated out, because I know there was robust discussion on that. The other one, the list is as follows. Let me find it. I got to dig through the packet here, so. I apologize. I had it? No, I lost it. Here they are. That's because they're sticky. First one is Total Quality Logistics for their August Economic Development reimbursement payment for forty, forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents. The second is to the Union Township Community Improvement Corporation for Economic Development Funding for Property Acquisition for forty-three, ninety-five Eichols Road, the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Stryker Sales Corporation Annual Tech Service Agreement. These are for our Stryker, our Stryker Loading and Moving Equipment for thirty thousand, oh seventy-four, forty. Stryker Sales Corporation for our Annual Tech Service Agreement for our Cardiac Treatment Devices. That's for thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents. One to the Claremont County Treasurer's Office for our 2025 Road Resurfacing Program. That is an agenda item tonight. If we're going to enter into the paving agreement with the county, we need to go ahead and have a corresponding purchase order for that agreement. So that's in the amount of one million, fifty thousand dollars. And then we have to JK Meier Corp. for the Civic Center, concrete repairs and asphalt maintenance. We have several spalled sidewalk sections and some asphalt areas that we need to repair. We've got some lipping that's going to go, that's going to get fixed in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And I think the facility's weathered the test of time well, but it's twenty years old, and it's time to start replacing stuff as we, as we see it. So that is the first list.
Okay. Could I have a motion then to approve those half a dozen items as described by Mr. Wright?
Some move.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on any of these? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Wright, the final item.
The other one is the PO that was previously approved. It's been approved, but it's being presented to the board. I mean, sometimes we have them that are already approved, and we bring them forward, but we have the policy to read them all out here. This is for Mullins Maintenance. This is for the Records Miscellaneous Storage Building. It's Station Fifty-two in the amount of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty cents. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Logan, I have a motion to approve the payment, the seventy-three thousand, four sixteen and thirty cents for the, for the building.
Some move.
Second.
All right. So, discussion?
Mr. Wright, how much of the ARPA funds cover this?
It's, I think, Mr. Campbell, was it almost all ARPA?
Yes.
About sixty-five, I don't know, sixty?
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand.
So, so just, so just a little bit's coming out of the general fund for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we had, this was previously approved in a resolution, I think, a couple, a couple of meetings ago. It was on a two-to-one vote. I was the no vote. My, my objection, I'm simply just not convinced it's needed in today's world of digitizing records. Beyond that, that's really all I want to say on this topic. Either of you two want to chime in anything additional?
Just say, I'm all for digitizing the records, but I understand that the team needs the storage and the staging location to move the hard copy records before digitizing them. I'll take them at that. So it pains me to spend money sometimes, but at the same rate, I trust our people, and they'll get it done efficiently, effectively, and accurately. Get transparency to the community when we get everything digitized, and that would be great.
Fair enough. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the Ivy Point easement for the Primrose Development.
So as part of the Primrose Project, which the board approved via zoning last month, part of their due diligence, they have to get rid of the stormwater off the site. They have to convey it. So it was identified that there's a small gore or panhandle that sort of wraps around the Sherfax and Mercy properties there. And there's actually a catch basin and a storm line on that. So that is the appropriate place to discharge the stormwater. We have to give them an easement to do that. Obviously, as long as they agree to maintain and hook up to it, I don't believe that, you know, in furtherance of economic development, you're talking about a ten million dollar project, you're going to have JED income. I don't think it's appropriate to ask for compensation for the easement. I think we want the project. We approve the project. We want the investment. Let's grant them the easement. We have a form of easement in front of you this evening that has been approved by our attorneys. Obviously, I need the leeway to be able to negotiate the finality of that. But key points are, they have to maintain it. They're responsible for all that. It, we have rights over the easement to do whatever we need to do with our property. So that's it.
Sounds good. Mr. Logan, may I have a motion to approve the granting of the perpetual easement as described by Mr. Wright?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the sidewalk project.
This is an LPA agreement that is required by ODOT and the federal government as part of the PID one-one-nine, oh six-six. This is the Bach, Buck, Buxton, Shaler Road Sidewalks Project. Again, if you recall, we got a grant back TA money, TA and STBG money from OKI to build a sidewalk basically from the lake at Provision South all the way to West Claremont High School, and then some stubs along Shaler, hooking in some various residential, and then also hooking in different residential down on Clough as you proceed toward the eastern boundary of the township there at Estrella. So, pretty big project, but a one-point-seven million dollar project. This is an LPA agreement. Basically, we have to execute it. We're going to administer, or we're going to receive the funds. We're partnering with the county engineer's office. They have extensive federal funding expertise, so they'll, they'll keep us on the straight and narrow on this, and just another part of the process to get the money, so.
Mr. Logan, may I have a motion to authorize the township administrator to execute the LPA federal-local let project agreement as described by Mr. Wright?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the 2025 Road Resurfacing Agreement.
So this is an agreement with the county, county commissioners and the township trustees to provide for our 2025 resurfacing program. See, the amount in there is one million, forty thousand, slightly lower than the purchase order. That way, if we get into the very end of the project, you know, pavement is done in feet, not inches, and quantities are done in cubic yards, not, you know, cups or quarts. So we try to get that as close as we can. This is the next step to authorize me to execute the agreement. I don't recall, Mr. Campbell, did they make us fund last year around this time, or do they wait until typically the end of the fiscal year?
They want us to fund this year.
Fund this year. So we'll fund before the end of the year and park that revenue, and then they'll bid it out. I think by all accounts, our paving program went very well this year.
Excellent.
And we were able to save a bunch of money on it, and we were able to repave significant portions of Barksalt Run, which really needed to be addressed with the excess. So appreciate your support on that.
Very good. Mr. Logan, may I have a motion to approve the 2025 roadway resurfacing agreement as described by Mr. Wright?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the legislative agenda. So, Mr. Wright, we talked about, we have a public hearing on 2024-53s. Or anything else needs to be said on that?
No, that's just the authorizing legislation for that.
Okay. May I have a motion then to approve 2024-53?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Campbell, we have a resolution 2024-54, then-announced certificate. What's that about?
So we had some additional requirements for some mowing and do the fireworks, the what they wanted is cut back, and, and we didn't have the total amount. So we issued a then-announced to take care of that mowing, so that we can handle the fireworks and the basin over Jumbo Jones.
All right, very good.
Appreciate if you guys would approve that tonight.
All right. Then, Mr. Logan, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-54?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, what's going on with 2024-55? Some obsolete property?
Yeah, so this is the disposal of some obsolete Stryker trolley load systems, Stryker power cots, and Stryker stair chairs. So if you think back a couple months, a few months ago, Village Woodlawn purchased two ambulance, ambulance units from us that were being retired from the fleet. We had stripped those out previously, thinking we might have a future use for them. So they got the ambulances without anything in them. They now have decided that they really want the Stryker cut systems and the stair chairs and all that. So it's an opportunity for us to dispose of equipment, two units for a price of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, which, that's about thirty-one thousand, five hundred per set, which, you know, obviously, these units cost us a lot of money to maintain. Chief can tell you how much these two units would cost to maintain. What is it, a few thousand?
Yeah, just, just by, just by selling these to the Village of Woodlawn, we're going to be cutting ten thousand dollars off of our service agreement with Stryker.
And they're just collecting dust right now. So this is an opportunity for us to recoup some revenue, and we're permitted by law to, to sell to another municipality. They're a municipal corporation in the state of Ohio.
Sounds like a win-win for everybody. I like the sound of that. Mr. Logan, I'd like a motion to adopt resolution 2024-55 as described by Mr. Wright.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Wright, tell us about the resolution 2024-56.
Authorizing legislation for the LWCF. That stands for Land and Water Conservation Fund. This is a federal program that's administered through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And it's a pretty significant funding source. Think they allow for funding up to five hundred thousand with equivalent local match. It looks like we're about four hundred thousand. I said four-ten earlier. I apologize. It's around four hundred thousand-ish. But basically, we're committing to a fifty percent local match. If funded, we have the ability, as I indicated, I believe it was a couple of fiscal years. So if we get the project announcement in 2025, we don't have to spend it right away. We can probably program that to be a one-one-twenty-six or a partial twenty-five, twenty-six expenditure. It really just depends on how quick you want to advance that. And I think it's always good to be able to go after these funding sources to offset, bring those federal monies back to Union Township, so.
That works for me. Okay, Mr. Logan, I would like a motion to adopt resolution 2024-56.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last one here is Resolution 2024-57, nuisance pavement resolution. And the last one here is Resolution 2024-57, nuisance pavement resolution. Mr. Wright, what's that about?
So this is part of our ongoing effort to clean up properties in the township. Mr. McCormick and Mr. Burkey do a great job on these. There's two of them this month, 841 Young's Lane and 4265 Bantam Lane. Both are a, the statute authorizes vegetation, garbage, refuse, and debris. These fall into the garbage, refuse, and debris section. If you look at the exhibits, they're pretty self-explanatory. One significantly worse than the other, both bad. So we hate to do this, we try to get people to respond administratively, but unfortunately, until there's sometimes this threat, or sometimes we have to take action, that's kind of where we are.
I did a drive-by of both properties, and the one on Young's Lane was particularly interesting. I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-57.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Which brings us to comments from the board members. Mr. Logue, what's on your mind?
Well, gentlemen, looking forward into December, it's hard to believe the year has gone by, going by so quick. Mr. Dills mentioned a presentation for Rumke in the upcoming month. I think that'd be excellent, great. You know, I first met with a government affairs rep for Rumke last December, and they were looking for something on the east side, and kind of had me with good jobs, a great product that they do in communities, and hooked on the fact that every day could be junk day in Union Township. I'd hoped that the project overall would move forward about six months faster than it did, but that's probably my only thing to kind of complain about, because I think Mr. Wright, jumping in in January and taking that lead and running with it, executing it, getting it done, which I think we're going to hear more about next month, it was phenomenal work, and also, I think I believe a great sale price on the reinvestment of that land and the things here that the board entrusted wisely for him to execute with. So anyway, great work by everybody on that, and just excited to see that move forward. We just came through 249 years of Marine Corps Birthday and Veterans Day, so anyone looking at a veteran right here, hope you had a good Veterans Day, sir.
You had a good stay.
There we go. We are on the same program then, and Mr. Dills, your service, and I hope you had a wonderful Veterans Day as well. So, you know, aside from that, I just continue to hear constant good community feedback on the improvements in the parks, the road reinvestment program this last year, doing 10 miles of paving of the roads, and what we've done with communication and transparency, delivering to the overall community, where the overall community is interested to be engaged. And so I just really look forward. I think we've got a really great base year down, Mr. Wright running this full year, and Lisa, you know, working her aspect and all of our department heads, and just starting to look energized and excited for turning through the holidays, everyone be safe through the holidays, but going into a strong 2025, so. Appreciate it, Mr. Becker.
All right, Mr. Dills?
Same thing, yeah. Happy Veterans Day, we had that yesterday, and also President-elect Trump and JD Vance and our Senate and the House, good day, and also all of our local candidates as well, so they all did a good job. I, as far as Rumke, Mr. Wright, you did very well, and I got to tell you, I was actually, I don't ever say no, but I was leaning towards no. I don't want Rumke to come in and build there for obvious thoughts that come into your head. But when Mr. Wright sat me down and showed me everything, it's very clean, looks clean, the building looks really nice, it's not a landfill, it's just a simple transport system. So, looks good, looks clean, I like it, and so, Mr. Wright, well done on executing that deal. I'm looking forward to having some Q and A with them as well coming in here. I debated if I was going to, I should have brought this up, and we just voted on that JED, and I didn't, but it's weighing on me, so I'm going to talk about it now, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
It's just, you know, myself, you two don't have to comment on it, but, so I, look, I remember when Mr. McGee was sitting up here, one thing he said he wanted to do was see the Children's Hospital project through, and I can take zero credit for Children's Hospital, I had nothing to do with it. That was done with the previous administrator, Mr. Wright, and the previous board, Mr. Logue, you were on there. I had zero to do with it, I don't take credit for it, I don't even try, but the JED was also already pre-negotiated, if you will, that might be the wrong words to use there. So I am, a JED is a good tool to use, but in my opinion, it has to be used extremely sparingly, and it's a good tool to use to bring in revenue to the township, so we don't have to go back for levies for our police and fire and things like that. You know, fundamentally, I'm against them, but again, that's why I say use them extremely sparingly. But to break it down in layman's terms very quickly, a JED is basically a 1% earnings income tax onto those employees, and in this case, I am for it. Number one is already, I don't want to say pre-negotiated, hopefully it's not stepping out of lines there, but Children's Hospital is a nonprofit, so therefore they pay zero property taxes, therefore they pay zero into the township, but it's hospital, so clearly they're going to be using our services every day, how many employees are going to be working there, quite a bit, they'll be using our roads, obviously our fire and EMS will be making daily trips there, it makes sense for them to contribute, so I am on board with the JED, obviously that's why I voted against for it, but I just wanted to make that clear, that it needs to be a tool that's used extremely sparingly when it makes sense, and not all the time, so just wanted to get that off my chest, because it was weighing on me, so. Talk again, sir.
All right, very good. So I guess the last meeting, I sat here and talked trash, and I want to talk trash again. So it was, I think it was the first Saturday in October, we had like a trash, you know, the township was sponsoring a trash pickup day in both Klepper Park and Veterans Park, and so I showed it at Klepper's Park. Nice day, bumped into some people I knew, and people thanking me for, you know, picking up trash, and, you know, it's a good exercise wandering around for a couple hours, and, you know, park went bad, you know, if you look hard enough in the weeds, you can find a bottle or can or something. And then what I got thinking about as I was doing this, I thought, you know, it's a nice day, why don't I do this next Saturday, or the Saturday after, and so I started doing that. So every Saturday since then, I've been out, you know, cleaning up different areas, and I take, you know, the part at the bottom of Rumke Road is, and Old 74 is perpetual. I don't know what it is about that area, but it gets bad, you know, a few days after I've been through there. So I've had a number of people on social media, you know, wanting to help, and wanting to, I guess, do some of the highways. I want to discourage people from doing that, you know, the number one priority has to be your personal safety. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I mean, when I'm out there, I'm cautious, I stand, you know, if there's a guard rail, I stand behind it, assuming I can reach where I'm trying to reach, it's out by the street. You know, so you just got to be aware of your surroundings, of course, everybody's different, and, you know, how quickly they could jump out of the way if they have to. So I just really just wanted to go on record to discourage anybody from working any kind of busy highway. But as people walk their dogs, go for walks, around their neighborhoods, I do see people, and people have been doing this all along, they'll take like a, you know, little trash bag with them, you know, like a Kroger bag or something, and, you know, pick up trash as a walk, so that's a good thing, and I hope people do continue to do that, and just, you know, number one is safety. I talked to ODOT recently about, you know, the major highways, that'd be like State Route 32, I-275, and what their policy was, you know, really didn't know, like, you know, how often do they clean it up? How do they clean it up, kind of what's the mechanism for it? So the answer is, they use inmates, I guess from, I guess, one or more of the state prisons, they work with the local municipal courts, so they are Clarkmont County Municipal Court, where they have, you know, people there get sentenced to community service work, and also then their own people that, you know, are ODOT employees. So what sounds like the way it works, generally speaking, is before they mow an area, say they're mowing the, you know, the center strip along 275 or 32, the people mowing will, you know, get big stuff like, you know, mattresses and furniture, and hopefully, you know, pick up other trash before the mower hits it, and then you can have this, you know, great big confetti litter bomb, which makes it far worse than it was before they mowed. The thing is, I think they only mow, I want to say like three times a year, so that's not, you know, a big effort to pick up trash, it's certainly not keeping up the problem. Yeah, I don't want to be pointing the finger at ODOT and saying they're the problem here, because, you know, it's just a matter of resources. How much do we, the people, want to pay in taxes to, you know, to have, you know, litter control and picked up? So I just, so that's what I wanted to say to the public, you know, I talked to ODOT about this, kind of got their story, what they can do, and again, I just, you know, safety is job one, I don't want to see anybody get hurt on a highway, so, you know, please, please be cautious. And with that, we're going to go into, I'm going to list some events that are upcoming, and then we're going to go into executive session. Mr. Logue, you have something?
Can I add to?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
After Mr. Dills' comments, hey, thank you for clarifying that with the perspective of the JED, and I just, I think I also just want to re-echo that. The JED being passed tonight, it's a regular meeting with a public hearing, all of you here saw that, and we don't have anyone from the community opposing that as that is. So, you know, I'm fundamentally like you, I don't like them, but I understand the need with the way that a township revenue model works, and the fact that it's essentially a user's tax, and the aspect of those that are in the community, coming and trailing the community and using it and driving the costs that otherwise we would have to deal with, and that's also unfair to the residents and community to basically pass that tax burden to them. So, Mr. Dills, thanks for pointing that out, and also thanks again for just clarifying, championing Mr. Wright's delivery of the Rumke deal, because as we three know, we're in silos, so Higher Vice Code does not allow us to talk to each other about deals and different township business, so that was one of the biggest concerns I initially had, why I told the Rumke Government Affairs, I'd like for this to move quick as it can, because, you know, I didn't, Union Township is broad and diverse, and so sometimes with broad, diverse environment, there's, can be small minorities that, I don't know, they hear the Rumke name, they might just not like it, and I didn't want to bring that as a big project in front of you guys at a time where your election cycles are happening next year, because people like to try to make things into unnecessary footballs, and trying to avoid that, I guess, just for the benefit of the community. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Becker, back over to you. Would you, I was going to offer, would you like me to read the executive session note?
Sure.
Well, let me know when you're ready, you got to go through your, as vice chairman, I'll be here.
I've got the event, upcoming events, and if you want to read it, because you read faster than I do.
I'll be here, I'm just trying to be a good vice.
I appreciate your offer, yeah, I'll turn that over to you when we get there. The last thing I wanted to say was, when I was talking about the trash, is I do take requests, so, you know, do as I say, don't do as I do. Let me know where there's, where the worst areas are in Union Township in terms of trash, whether it's, you know, an ODOT area, but, you know, hey, there's nothing worse than 32, you know, between, you know, wherever Bell's Lane, Old 74 is an example, or the north side or the south side of it, you know, so we might be able to get the municipal court people out there doing it, we might be able to get ODOT out there doing it, you know, I might get out there myself doing it, if I'm feeling ambitious. So I am taking requests, please let me know where you're seeing the worst areas, and we'll see if we can address it. With that, I have half of those events coming up, then we're going to go into executive session, and when we do executive session, we're, when we come back out, we're simply going to adjourn, we're not going to discuss anything, we're not going to debate anything, we're not going to vote on anything, you're welcome to stay, whatever you want to do, but if you leave, you're not going to miss anything. So upcoming events, there's no zoning meeting for November, the zoning, it's a zoning commission meeting, is not going to happen. The zoning appeals, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is going to meet on Thursday, December the 5th. The Board of Trustees meeting is going to meet, Board of Trustees will meet the next, it'll be on, the next meeting will be December the 10th at 6:00. The township offices will be closed on Thursday, the 28th, and Friday, the 29th, for Thanksgiving. The Union Township Energy Special Improvement District, ESID, will hold its annual meeting on Friday, November the 15th, at 2:30 PM here at the Civic Center. Mr. Wright, what's an ESID?
It's basically a special improvement district for energy-efficient PACE financing. So we've got a couple of those, there's, the Ohio revised code allows for PACE financing, specifically the new Malink project down on River Valley Drive, they're a PACE program participant. Basically, what happens is there's lending, there's a lender that is secured to, you know, like geothermal, solar, all kinds of other things, there's banks that lend to that, and they secure that vis a vis a special assessment on the property, which is collected semi-annually in addition to your real estate taxes. And so you have to have, whenever you have a SID, you have to have a board to administer it, so this is just the annual meeting.
Very good, thank you for that explanation. The last thing I have then is to encourage people to use the Union Township post office downstairs for your holiday needs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my vice chairman to read off the legal requirements to go into executive session.
Do you want to ask for the motion?
Yeah, I can do that.
And then I'll read?
Yeah.
I like that work.
How about if I go ahead and make the motion, since you're going to do the reading?
Okay.
I will move to enter into executive session pursuant to Higher Vice Code, Section 121. 22G, as Mr. Logue will describe.
It's like a tag.
Second.
Go ahead.
Item one, to consider the appointment, employment, and compensation of public employer official pursuant to the Higher Vice Code, Section 121.22-Golf 1. Item two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes of premature disclosure of information will give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to the Higher Vice Code, Section 121.22-Golf 2. Item three, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to Higher Vice Code, Section 121.22-Golf 4. Item four, to consider the confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements of applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiations with other political divisions respecting requests for economic development assistance provided that both of the following conditions apply. A, the information is directly related to requests for economic development assistance that is not to be provided or administered under any provision of Chapter 715, 725, 1724, or 1728, or Section 701.07, 3735.67, to 3735.70, 5709.40, to 5709.43, 5709.61, to 5709.69, 5709.73, to 5709.75, or 5709.77, to 5709.81, of the Higher Vice Code, or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project, and B, a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with economic development project pursuant to Higher Vice Code, Section 121.22-Golf 8.
You do that much better than I do, I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, is there a correction?
Just for the record, golf stands for G, and then also, you sound like, you know those pharma commercials, like, you know, you might have cancer, you might, you might die, consult your doctor. Well done, that was good.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Campbell, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're into executive session at 7:25 PM.
Thanks everyone for coming.
All right.
Okay, I would like a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 9:23 PM.
I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 9:23 PM.
Thank you.
Meanest other?
Thank you.